Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, October 22, 2019. We will begin our open study session. First, on our list, we have our smoking ordinance H-19-06.
We have a copy of that. Do you have any extra copies of that, by the way?
Really? Of what?
The ordinance.
The ordinance is passed. I don't know.
Yeah, the ordinance is already passed.
Yeah, it's okay.
So what's this meeting for?
Are we having a study session? Okay, I'm...
What's this meeting for?
Yes.
Oh, you have some questions, that's right.
Yes.
Yes, you're right.
No, no, I understand, but I mean, what is... Is that... Okay, to go over what the ordinance again? Because the ordinance is passed, so I don't know what...
Well, this is for the...
The application, right?
I'm sorry, I... Do you want me to read it line by line?
No, no, I understand.
You're willing to do that, sir?
If you want.
Well, no, I mean, but...
I think I can.
Because we do have the schedule for our smoking ordinance H-19-06.
Honorable City Council Attorney General Clark Cunningham of Carthage, I review ordinance H-19-06 and have developed listed issues that need to be clarified with me with regards to the ordinance. They are as follows: H-65 and H-66. These sections detail specific application requirements. This section addresses an application. The smoking lounge application that one of the council members issued in an email September 23, 2019, mentions an original application fee of $1,500 and a renewal fee of $250 as passed by council resolution. Just to break through your honorable body's attention there is that not an assignment of an application fee, and none of our current businesses are required to have both an application fee and a business license fee. Is this your intention? If an application fee is desired, it must be passed by council.
Excuse me.
So we can actually, I mean, if that's the intention of the meeting is to have an application fee, we can write a resol...
Am I going to be to cut you off? No, sir. You know, I had to keep it long. I spent a long time working on this, many hours working on this. Two days when the people from New York were here to prepare our election paper, and I spent two days on it. Well, we're here where I've been spending an election paper. I sent this to everybody ahead of time. I'm dismayed because I asked, please reply to me if you got this. You know how many council people replied to me? Two. My letter states, please review this, look this over, and let's have a successful meeting where we can solve the problems. And with all due respect, you're coming to me saying, what are we here for?
So at this point...
Now, Section 866, I have a question about. H-72, H-73, H-74, I have a question about. H-70, I have a question about. H-73, I have a question about.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella?
So, no, the email was received. So it's probably best to just address these one at a time then, because it wouldn't make sense, obviously, to go through all of them all at once. So if you don't mind, do you mind if we just address them one at a time? I know we have the attorney with us here to help us clarify some of the stuff and come to some sort of a resolution. You comfortable with that?
Is that our intention right now, or...
This is your meeting.
Right.
I brought this to your attention.
No, I understand.
With the problem I have.
And they were legitimate concerns, but what I'm saying, let's address them one at a... Yeah, they were legitimate, but I'm just saying, let's address them one at a time, come up with a resolution, compromise whatever, and then move forward.
I agree with you. We should...
Okay, yeah, I think at this time, we'll go through it, because we do have this time scheduled anyways. Who would like to begin?
Well, if we heard each one...
Listen to Muscat.
If we heard each one, then we can go through them. My big thing was, is an application fee is, we don't charge anybody for an application fee now, correct? Anybody, any other businesses, right?
Right.
So that would be kind of a discriminatory thing if we went with this, and I believe that's part of the intention that you're bringing up also, correct?
That's one of my concerns.
Yeah, so we have to be careful with that. I mean, there's other businesses that don't have to pay, and then we're going to single out one business that does have to pay, so I'm concerned with that, so...
I think we can move past that. We all agree that they shouldn't be charged a fee, so we've settled that portion.
But, Madam Chair, there is still...
Abella?
Okay, so renewal fee, so we... I mean, what I would like to suggest is, let's just keep it the same. It's all other businesses. I'm sure for every other business other than hookah lounges, there's a set pattern that we have. Is that correct? It's the same thing for all other businesses. Is that correct?
We have a schedule of fees.
I'm sorry?
We have a scheduled fee depending on the business.
Depending on particular business, okay. On average, what is the application fee and what is the renewal fee on average?
There is not an application fee. The renewal fee or the original license fee is $50.
Okay, and there's... So all other businesses are $50, right?
Okay.
Not all, all other smoking exemption businesses.
Okay, smoking businesses.
Other businesses are different. A banquet hall is a hundred off the top of my head. I mean, the schedule of fees is probably at least eighty different. A retail store is $30. If you sell tobacco, it's an extra ten, so...
But on average, they're under $100. Is that a correct statement? Okay, so I would like to suggest that we not have an application fee of $1,500 as per the original email way back when, in September, and have an application fee of... Let's, because I would suggest, because it's a new ordinance, and we may have a little bit more work to do, let's just make it $75, which is very reasonable. And renewal fees, right here, this suggestion, the original suggestion in the email was $250. What is the current renewal fees for most businesses of similar type? None?
There are no separate renewal fees. The renewal fee is what the business licenses cost for all businesses.
Okay.
So the banquet hall pays $100. The renewal is $100 a year after they got their original license.
Okay.
Okay, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yeah, so I think, again, the application fee is not a good idea, because it gets into some gray area and possibly discriminatory. You already said you have a fee schedule, right? And there's already smoking hookah lounges that are part of that fee schedule, so why wouldn't that not just carry over in this case? I think it'd be wise just to... You already have a fee schedule.
What is the fee schedule at this point?
I think you should apply it, right?
There's no reason why it wouldn't, but as I say, the gentleman who introduced the ordinance introduced an application with a fee of...
No, I didn't. There's no application. We went back and forth.
To make up new fees, don't...
We went back and forth with the application, but you never put it on agenda, so right now, all we have is the ordinance, so that's all we got right now. So there's no application.
So we have no application at this time, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay, because that's what I thought we were going to go over tonight, is the actual application itself.
You got that in your email.
Right?
Yes, we have that in our email.
So it's probably a good idea, Madam Chair, maybe for the clerk to come up here, so this way it could be on the microphone, if you don't mind, Mr. Clerk. But if, Madam Chair...
Sure, Councilman Abella?
If there's already a set fee for current hookah licenses, you already have one in place, correct?
Yes.
For the ones that have been there?
Yes.
And for any hookah lounge that started hypothetically two years ago, five years ago, or seven years ago, you have a set fee already in place?
Yes, sir.
So I would like to suggest, and if my fellow council members concur, we just keep it the exact same way and not change it any, not make it $1,500, not make it $250, because it should be no different than the way it's always been. Is everybody okay with that?
I'm okay.
Madam Chair, Mr. ...
Yeah, and there's a case that says, there's a case that says if something is not reflective of the actual cost, but, you know, like they used to do with adult businesses and stuff, that very high application fees, that doesn't fly. So we've got to be wary of that.
I, you know, and I believe the intent is to deter young adults, kids, from smoking the hookah. But again, I think there's rules and regulations that the hookah bar owners are watching for that sort of stuff, at least I hope they are, just like people that sell cigarettes, they're getting a lot of trouble for selling to minors. I agree with the councilman about keeping the same schedule as we've had in the past, and I looked over all the documents, and as much as I like ordinances for certain things, I'm going to fall back on Mr. Clerk's suggestion of how we do this, okay, and his application forms and everything that he introduced, as far as I'm concerned.
Councilman Bazey?
So Section 8-67 doesn't have an ordinance. Again, the application never went anywhere, so now we have to go back, refer back to the ordinance, which is passed, it's been supervetoed, and that's what we have to go by right now, because obviously, the application never went through. So the fees under 8-67, there's nothing in here that says anything about fees, so we have not established the fees, so that's, again, that's whatever was determined, or whatever you guys are doing right now, it's fine, obviously, because it's not addressed in this section. There's no fees in the ordinance.
If I might, there never is any fees in the ordinance, because if you put the fees in the ordinance, when you change the fees, you have to reach past the ordinance. Consequently, fees are always done through a regular resolution. That's been traditional.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella?
In the ordinance under 8-67, it says, "Any person required to obtain a license pursuant to this article shall pay a non-refundable application fee at the time of the application or renewal of the application in the amount established by the resolution of the City Council." So with that being the case, we could... Yeah, there's no set fee, as the mayor is saying, you can't set a fee. Great. We just keep it whatever it's been, and I think we just move forward. Should be fine.
I agree.
Everybody's okay with that. There's nothing to change.
All right, may I ask our attorney something?
Sure.
In H-65, it says, "A tender of the correct smoking license application fee as established by resolution adopted by the City Council." So there's one reference there to a application fee. Councilman Abdallah just pointed out a second reference to an application fee, which now the Honorable Counsel has decided would be inappropriate. Does that need to be addressed in the ordinance, Mr. Clerk, or could we leave that in there and just by resolution say there will be no application fees for ordinance?
Is that what we're saying?
No.
No.
No, we're saying, keep it the same as it's been.
Keep it the same.
No, no.
We have no application fees.
No application fee and follow the schedule.
Excuse me, can I interrupt?
Sure.
Councilman Abdallah, the application fee and the business license fee are two separate and distinct.
Correct.
Okay, you're saying that the... You're using that, you know, as one or the other. It's not one or the other, so there is no application fee. The fee is the business license fee.
Needs to be moved.
Currently.
Moved.
So for those businesses that opened four years ago, five years ago, or seven years ago, they just paid for the business license, correct?
Right.
Okay, and we just keep that the same?
So, but there is two references to...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
...an application fee, which is...
I see what...
A separate and distinct fee.
So according to your attorney, we need to strike that application fee.
Okay, how would you recommend we strike that out?
We can put it in the resolution.
I would recommend doing it the easiest way, right? If you amend the ordinance, you've got to go through your two readings and all the other things, so if you put in your resolution that you are going to use the same fees, not application fee, but license fee, but we're not at this point charging an application fee, I don't think anyone's going to object to that. Well, applicants are going to come in and complain that you're not charging them a fee.
Yeah, well, I'm going to disagree from, as long as I've sat at this table, I believe the amendment, the ordinance has to be amended. I don't think there is any disagreement amongst that, but I think, otherwise, you've got an ordinance that's calling for something that doesn't exist, we don't want it to exist, and that's a problem. Ten, fifteen years from now, somebody will sit at the table and say, hey, you're not following the law here, Mr. Clerk, calls for an application fee and you're not collecting. I think you've got to go back and amend it and take out the language so it's not in there, or otherwise, I think you're creating problems for the future, in my opinion.
And counter that, let me misbelieve that, two years from now, you might say that there is so much work that has to go into a new application. Background checks, you're spending a lot of time doing that, we've got to recoup that money somehow, maybe at that point, after you've had some experience, you say, we'd better charge an application fee at that point, and it's allowed in the ordinance.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella?
How about the suggestion that we, since that is what the ordinance is, and we have to respect that, there's an ordinance in place right now, we make the application fee $1. That would follow the rules of the application, outside of the ordinance, and we are allowed to charge something, correct? And we just make it $1, and I can't see any business that would object to $1 at this point.
I agree, no one would object to that.
And we'd be following the ordinance, is that correct?
It would be.
And that would not need a second reading or anything along the lines, is that correct?
That would be your resolution. You don't need a second reading.
Good suggestion, I agree.
Yeah, it's like a placeholder, like...
Yeah, that would be a placeholder for the future, where you can bump that up when necessary.
We still have to go through the application anyway.
But I'm saying, it would follow what the ordinance says, which is that there's an application fee, we wouldn't have to have a second reading, we'd just move forward.
Now, but that, again, this is only pertaining to hookah bars, though.
Smoking lounges.
There's smoking lounges.
Cigar bars.
Cigar bars, whatever, smoking lounges. So the other businesses now don't have to pay the dollar.
No, this is only for this ordinance.
This is only just for the... I understand that, but again, we have one in an ordinance just for one certain business and not all businesses. How does that hurt us, Mr. Attorney?
I don't know. Are you charging application fees for other businesses throughout the city?
No, no.
That's the problem.
You may want to do that, so I don't know.
So keep it, so keep it status quo, and we can just, by resolution, we can charge an application fee. I just want to make sure that we got our bases covered here.
I'm a little surprised to hear that the city doesn't have any application fees for any...
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella?
The only two things I can think of are, like, if you go to the Planning Commission, you go to the Board of Appeals, you have to pay an application fee that's not refundable. But I'm not aware of any other application fee.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella?
So how about this one, counselor? What if we changed all of them to have their business license, let's use a hypothetical $50, so that's where it's even across the board, and we say, from henceforward, we have $10, for the ones that's $50, and for the ones that's $75, we change it. Henceforward, we have a $10 application fee on all business licenses, and that fee would be subtracted from traditional business license. So if the business license was $85, now you have a $10 application fee, and then $75 for the rest. Can we do that type of resolution? This way, we'd be complying for all of them across the board, it'd be all the same. $10 application fee, and whatever difference is between that and whatever original business license, would be the rest.
For every other business application...
I'm telling you, if you want to make it even, if the concern is about making it even, to me, it's $1. I can't see why someone would come back and say, why are you charging me $1? I mean, and if it went to court, I can't see that being a problem.
Okay, Councilman Bazey?
Okay, I mean, obviously, we still need an application to go with the ordinance, and that still has to go in front of us, so we can put that in the application. The fee actually goes into the application, since the application is going to go with the ordinance.
It's a lot of paperwork for a dollar.
No, 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 we, we still have to go through that. The ordinance requires you to do a few things, so we still have to go through some steps. I don't know if you guys read to the... Excuse me, if you guys went through the actual ordinance, there's a lot of things that is required by the, by the ordinance. There's an application requirement in Section 865. So the clerk actually had that in part of his email, that he wants something like a checklist.
Council Chair, one second.
Listen to Muscat.
I think it would be the easiest thing to do, is to strike the application from the ordinance, and then by resolution, say, we're going to charge an application fee of $1 to all the businesses from now on. And in that way, we can raise it as we go along, and we see fit, we can raise it anytime or take it away anytime by resolution. This way, it's out of the ordinance, and it makes everybody happy.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, would you like to weigh in on that?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. With all due respect, you're going to create a nightmare for the clerk's office. I will have to change every single fee schedule. I will have to go into the computer and redesign the business license for it to reflect that there is now an application fee. You see the business licenses as they come out, and you see it has, you know, I'm going to use, say, the Stitt Post, for example, it has a banquet hall, it has, if they have any machines, they have a tag for the machines. If you sell tobacco, it's a $10 fee. So now I'm going to have to go into every single license and now add a application
capraise and all of that.
Madam Chair.
It's a lot of work.
All right.
And, you know...
Would you agree that striking it out of the ordinance would be beneficial?
I don't know why you, for seven... I've got to be honest with you, for seven businesses, why you wouldn't want to affect the other 842 businesses in the city or whatever?
Right.
And give them an application fee where they never had one. I'll have people at my window saying, what's this application fee? Why are you charging me this? And now I'm paying more, even though they might not be, so I would, I would ask you to really consider before you instituted something like that. Once again, folks, you know, this isn't my wishes, okay? And I want to make this perfectly clear, because there's people out there that, you know, and I wrote in my letter, and I'm going to read it, so it's on the record. In closing, I would like to offer the following thoughts. The City Clerk's Office and the City Clerk do not have a personal interest in writing the enactment or enforcement of this or any other ordinance passed by this honorable body. Our only interest is in maintaining a fair and consistent application of any function required of the City Clerk's Office. Such practices establish and maintains the integrity of the City Clerk's Office and the City of Dearborn Heights. Since the passes, I've just... And so, my questions and concerns of this ordinance are based solely upon a fair and consistent application for all stakeholders in the City of Dearborn Heights. That's the purpose we're here for. And, you know, we could talk about, we'll give a dollar fee, and I'm not being critical, or we can, you know, that's... What's fair is fair. We have an established practice for 862 businesses. Why have an application fee now? Just let them apply like any other business. I mean, there's, we're talking about seven businesses in the city. Let them apply, we'll go through the application process, clear up these other ambiguities that I've mentioned to you, and away we go. That was the purpose of this meeting. Thank you, Mr. ...
Yeah, I just want...
Well, at this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Attorney, what would be the quickest and easiest way to accomplish what Mr. Clerk is asking for?
If you're not going to charge an application fee, you have your choice. You could amend the ordinance and get rid of it. That would take you two readings, that would take you a month or so to do more processing. Or you could have in your resolution that the business fee is such, but there is no application fee at this point, and I...
And we can do that tonight without a second reading?
You can do a resolution setting fees or not setting fees.
May I say, I don't think we're going to get a resolution tonight, unless you want to go through each of one of these and clarify this up. That's the reason for the study session, so we can do it once and for all correctly, instead of rushing to something. I want to agree with our attorney, Mr. Clerk. At this point, I would prefer, for the reasons of this, I would prefer not to amend the ordinance. It's costly, folks. These ordinance is cost money. We're going to have to codify it and so forth and so on, so if we can establish the same means by a resolution that doesn't cost the city a dime, why do we want to start amending the ordinance until it's absolutely necessary legally to amend the ordinance?
Can I weigh in briefly on that?
Sure.
You know, this is new, it's a new ordinance in the city. There's always a shakeout period, if there's just really work in, what's wrong with it, what's right with it. Maybe six months down the road, there's other things in here you want to tweak, tweak them all at the same time by adjusting your ordinance, rather than doing it every time there's a problem. That would be my suggestion. I think the application fee, as other communities are using it in relation to the smoking lounges, you're spending a lot of time doing these background checks as your ordinance requires. That takes hours, and that's what the application fee is. Mr. Constance is right, that the courts have said that your fees cannot be designed to hinder or dispute the application, it's designed only to provide services for the population. There's no other reason you don't set a $5,000 application fee there. Just to recoup the money that the city spends by doing the background checks and other stuff, so that's the purpose. Maybe down the road, you'll want to do that. Maybe you'll find that you're spending a lot of time doing these background checks, and a lot of trust at that point, so that would be my suggestion.
Sure.
So do it by resolution.
Chief is the easiest, and fix it later.
We need to hear the rest of these, though, so we can make sure that everything is covered.
Can we move on to the next one, then?
Sure.
Okay. Application review. Section 8.66, the City Clerk shall forward a copy of the application to police, building, zoning, fire for review. What are they reviewing? That's all it says. How about the ordinance department? Should they be included in review? I'm just quoting the ordinance itself, folks, so... Should someone develop a checklist as we do for the liquor license review, and the checklist be returned to the City Clerk? That's my suggestion, that we use the same checklist that we use for the liquor license review. But as I say, the ordinance is ambiguous, because in, you know, the departments will review. If I, if I send a application to our Chief of Police, who's sitting there, he's going to look at me and say, what do you want me to do with it?
What, Madam Chair? I mean, obviously, the application that I forwarded, that it was never put on agenda, excuse me, has all the requirements the ordinance has for the person who's actually applying, applying for the hookah lounge, and also talks about who the owners are, and it talks about their criminal records. So obviously, the police department, when they get that application, has whoever the person's name is, they're going to see if, okay, that person has criminal records. I mean, that's, that's what this is. Again, you know, we go back to when we started this ordinance, we want to make sure we, whoever comes in to the City of Dearborn Heights, wants to open especially a hookah lounge, we want to make sure that there's no criminal records. We definitely don't want nobody else's problem, you know? If there's a problem with another city, that person was rejected, I don't care who that person is, comes into Dearborn Heights, okay, Dearborn Heights is saying, okay, you know what, you guys can come open any business in Dearborn Heights, we'll accept you, even though other cities are rejecting that particular business. We created this ordinance to make sure any, any, any person who's going to come in does not have an issue in another city. And if the police department gets the, gets the application, and that's why we created this application, and again, the council has to approve it, we want to make sure all the items are addressed per, per the ordinance, and as you mentioned, the ordinance department's going to make sure that the business has the proper, you know, they're going to inspect the property to make sure it's sufficient, it's good, there's no, there's no issues, there's a CFO, and there's everything else. I mean, this is like, you know, we're acting here like we've never issued anything, any permit or any license to any business.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Caston?
So, Clerk and I hear you, I think there's three issues.
Number one, it's sort of like the food trucks. You're saying you need direction from us, it's a newer use, you need to know, like you say, a checklist. The fees issue is a separate issue, there's some extra work, like when we have pit bulls that get licensed and they have to be chipped and photographed and so forth. And then the third issue is the moratorium. You're not worrying about the fees or about the moratorium, you just want direction regarding the ordinance, the process and the application, and then what has to be done with it. And that's for the council to, and the administration, I suppose, to formulate and initiate and have in place. Remember, with food trucks, it just slipped through the cracks, or maybe not slipped through the cracks, but probably didn't happen quick enough. But it's a newer type of use, and we have to get, you know, everything down, so. Or there were people for a while coming to the clerk's window about, well, I want to open up a marijuana business in Dearborn Heights, what do I do? The first thing is, they wouldn't go to the, they shouldn't, you know, approach the clerk, but.
Okay, Councilman Bazey.
Again, this is the application that you forwarded, it's similar to the ones that we created. It does have something on here about whoever's operating the business, you know, does not have convictions or anything like that. So obviously, the police department will just verify, that's what needs to be done. And again, a lot of cities are actually, all we're trying to do here is trying to be proactive to make sure, to prevent what other cities have problems with. A lot of cities has had issues with certain hookah lounges or certain hookah owners with not abiding by anything. It was like free for all. They can open to any hours of the night, you know, there's shootings, there's drugs, there's alcohol. And again, we're just trying to be proactive, have something. We've got to make sure all these, whoever's going to come and operate this kind of business in our city, they have to abide by the rules. Other cities have had issues, and we're trying to do is to make sure that this not happened in our city. I don't know why it's so difficult to do this. Obviously, our attorney, he's not here, he said it was a conflict of interest that he actually introduced this ordinance, yet he hires another attorney, which is, it's still conflicted. So if we have to go through this item by item, I think the city council needs to bring an attorney if there's any objections to the ordinance. You know, we, you know, created this ordinance, it was passed, it was vetoed, we supervetoed it, and it's still, you know, I mean, it's a law right now by the city. And again, we're trying to make sure that no issues happen in our city. So I don't know why it's so difficult to go in there, create an application, to make sure, I can make you a checklist. I mean, if you guys need a checklist, I can create, I can pay for an attorney fees to do a checklist as other cities have done. I mean, there's probably 20, 30 cities just surrounding Michigan that has the same issues, and they were proactive by going in there and creating something to make sure that residents are not at risk. And we're saying here that it's ridiculous that we're even discussing this. I mean, we have an ordinance, let's create an application to coincide with the ordinance and just pass it.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Della.
What if in this particular case, at least at this particular point, just like our attorney mentioned, this is a work in progress, and obviously, there's going to be different things and issues that are going to come up that we may have to make whatever changes to keep, continue to move forward. But what if we were to do it a little bit more at this particular point, maybe have all the different departments? And I agree personally that the building department, the fire department, ordinance department, and police department should give approval on anybody based on what this ordinance, based on it passing. So what if at this particular point, we just have them sign off, like just like we had the last meeting, and I'm trying to recall, can't recall which particular application it was for, where we had to have, actually, that particular one was for streets, but very similar to that, where if you're going to put a stop sign or whatever, you have the different department heads signing off on it. What if we were to do this like that right now? At this particular point, the different department heads that we feel necessary sign off on it, and if they sign off on something and there's a potential problem down the line, then obviously, the omen is on them because they signed off on it. And then as we go through this, we feel there's a little bit more criteria that we need or changes, then obviously, we discuss it with the department heads and amongst ourselves and make the necessary changes as we move forward. Because like the attorney mentioned, there'll probably be some changes in the next five, six months as stuff comes up. Would that be something that would suffice for what you want to do?
Here's what I'd like to say, and with, not being redundant, I think I articulated it very well in my letter. Let me say what I want to address, Councilman Bazey. Councilman Bazey is talking like I'm an adversary here. Like, I don't know what the problem is, I don't know what you don't understand. I'm not your adversary, I'm not against your ordinance, I'm not for your ordinance, I'm, we already had the first night that it was introduced and when it was had talks of lawsuits and whatever. My concern is to administer it in a manner that seems fair to all people. It's never always going to be fair to all people because somebody's going to perceive something different than somebody else. But that we administer it in the most legal manner that we can that limits the exposure of the city, okay? I'm not, I'm not trying to be your adversary. You don't understand what's so hard? There isn't anything hard if we would have read this and gone through it right. You keep talking about a background check, Councilman Bazey. One of my questions in here, do you know what my question is about the background check? What is it?
The iChat?
What is the rest of my question?
Well, you have.
What is the rest of my question, sir?
No, I mean, I don't have.
You don't know, see?
I did read them, I did read all your questions, and everything is.
My question is, my question is, for precious metals and for pawn shops, we have the police department do a background check, which the people pay for. This will address what Mr. Clark said. Is that correct, Chief?
That's correct.
For ice cream vendors and trucks, we have an iChat, which they pay for and they bring in. So if you would have read my letter, the difficulty is, there is no difficulty, what do we want to do? Do we want to do the iChat, or do we want to do that? These are all the clarifications I need. But you're acting as I'm your adversary and I'm not. All I want to do is, since the clock is ticking, you know, a business came to my window, and they said, we got 180 days. Whether the honorable counsel realizes it or not, you put onus is on our existing smoking lounges that they have to comply and they have to be with the state by January 31st? Are there any smoking establishment?
31st.
The 31st, okay? So you put onus is on these businesses, they're here to try to establish what they're needed to do. I was on the phone with Mr. Blaine Kressman from the Health, and this was all things, with all due respect, that should have been done before this ordinance was introduced and passed. Now let me finish what I want to say, okay? You're saying, how do we do this? Okay, how did we do? I asked that this ordinance, and I'm going to be firm about this, I asked that this ordinance not be introduced before it was introduced. Did I not, Councilman Bazey, did I not ask you not to introduce it? That there were too many questions and too many onus is put on the city clerk's office, and there were legalities in there, and that we needed to talk to an attorney about that. But you saw fit to introduce, let me finish, you saw fit to introduce it.
I said nothing, go ahead.
You saw fit to introduce it anyway. So now here we are after the fact, trying to figure out what we should do. When we introduced the liquor license ordinance, how did we introduce it? The attorney wrote it, okay? The council read it, the council read it a second time, the council passed it, the attorney, who just happened to step in the room, and I met, we both did our homework, it took us several hours together, but us doing our homework separately to come up with the liquor license checklist, to come up with the application, to come up with the rest of the stuff. So we were doing things legally. What has happened to the city clerk's office is that you passed this, and now what do you do? That's why I have all these questions.
Okay, council.
And one last thing, if you don't mind, Madam Chair.
Sure, sure. Sorry, I thought you were done.
I offered to several members of the council that maybe you want to put a moratorium on this, at least for the existing businesses, on their thing, so they don't occur any problems with the state of Michigan. Did I not, did I say that to some of you? So that's where we are right now. So Councilman Bazey, I'm not your adversary, please don't say like it's so simple, I don't understand what the problem is, because it is not that simple, sir.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Oh, no, I'm just making notes because I agree with the moratorium. We have existing businesses that are now on a timeline that is, you know, it's not fair to the existing businesses at all, really. And this has got to get resolved, and if moratorium is going to assist those businesses, I want to see that happen.
Mr. Attorney, would that be something possible we could do?
We can do that ourselves.
We always do a moratorium.
Ourselves.
As long as you do it the right way.
And how do you suggest we do that?
We have three separate issues, fees, the actual application, and then the moratorium.
Well, the moratorium, you can assist write that, correct?
Sure.
So it's done correctly?
The problem with moratorium, some communities have, go on forever.
Yeah.
Well, there would be a time limit, I would agree on that.
Yeah, yeah.
But we've got to clarify for the moratorium, because there's two different issues. There's one issue for new licensees, and another issue that the clerk is concerned about, which I understand is concerned about current licensees, and you're absolutely right, we should put them in a situation where, you know, they're hustling. So we've already addressed the application situation, can we just put a moratorium for 90 days for the existing current businesses in Dearborn Heights that have smoking lounges?
To comply with this new ordinance?
Yes, up to 90 days.
Do you come up with 90 days?
Well, just three months, we should be able to come up with an application between now and 90 days.
They have 180 now, it doesn't feel like enough.
I mean, between us, the attorneys involved, and then our other attorney, and then the clerk, maybe we do some sort of, you know, all people are interested in this, sit down at a table, put together an application, move forward.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muska.
Do we have to, we have to do that in writing? We just can't say it out loud and just make a resolution?
No, you need to.
It'd have to be set in writing.
Can we do that tonight at this meeting?
January 31st.
It can be in writing.
Okay.
90 days is enough.
It will be in the minutes, but it's always better to do it in writing.
Okay.
Okay.
So we could have that ready for our next meeting then?
Put a moratorium at the next meeting then.
Yeah, then we could.
With the 90 day.
90 days.
Madam Chair.
Resident's speak.
That puts them where they already are. They're at 90 days now. So if you do a moratorium for 90, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 right now, it's just.
It's 180, but it expires January 31st, is what you said. So if you do 90, by the time we approve that, that puts them right at that mark.
But we expect to get it resolved by then.
The moratorium didn't do anything then, is my point.
Like we did the original moratorium.
All right, let's just do 180 then, if you think that's better.
Yeah, just to increase another 180 days, and let's get this done.
Let's just get this moving.
But for clarification, who's going to be putting together this application? I mean, is our counselor going to be doing that? Is it going to be us?
Mr. Clark, would you like to do that?
I think the clerk has already presented everybody with his.
For the sample, yeah, we got it.
That's the application, Councilman.
I have to do it, it corresponds with your ordinance, but as long as we're coming back for the moratorium, we have everything done for the next meeting, so that you guys can just pass on.
Okay.
And are you willing to write that resolution for us?
I'd be happy to, if that's.
Okay.
That would be ideal, that way, the correct wording and everything will be done that way.
Councilman Bazey.
Okay, again, I'm confused. Obviously, Mr. Miyake, he said that he has a conflict of interest with this resolution, with this ordinance. So by him, I'm sorry, I mean, I'm not being, no offense to anybody, but by him appointing another attorney, so I don't know how you would be also conflicted since he brought you on for this ordinance.
So I want you to address that?
No, actually, I mean.
We're addressing Mr.
You already said it's a conflict of interest for you to do anything with this ordinance.
Is it?
I believe I have a conflict of interest, I have my own opinions.
I'm sorry, sir, what was that?
I said I have my own opinions.
He doesn't believe he has a conflict of interest.
They may be different than Mr. Miyake's. I've been doing this for 38 years, I don't see a conflict. If you, I won't be hurt, Mr. Bazey, if you want some other attorney to do it. Be happy to write a resolution for you, put in something about a moratorium, and review again this application, and we can even do checklists if you want. But I think the ordinance talks about what really needs to be done. It has to be compliant, it talks about disqualifying criminal actors, which police departments and background check, I think the information is all here. And I think the clerk did a nice job putting together a proposed application, so. But if the question is, do I think there's a conflict of interest for me to do any of this stuff, I don't.
Okay.
And I can look forward, if you don't want me to, I'll be happy to step back.
Are you with him doing it?
Well, can we get it in advance so we can look at it, so we can have somebody else run through it?
Sure.
Yeah, we'll get by.
I mean, way in advance before the next.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Council Miyake.
Yes, the conflict is what's known as an issue conflict. It's not based on me having a client or anyone else, it's based on the idea that I've made a public statement that this ordinance is invalid, and Mr. Roberts made the same statement. So I can't both administer something and be in a position where I'm supposed to defend something I've already said, is that problematic? So that's why Mr. Clark was contacted, and he also does a lot of our depend when it comes to MMRMA. If there was a lawsuit, it'd be a perfect segue for him to represent the city with regard to this.
Okay, thank you.
I'm agreeing, and would request him to write that resolution for us.
Absolutely. Okay, Council Chair, my chair.
Okay, let's get Council Mansell.
The application fee that you have, is that a sample fee, or application fee, or is that the official application fee as it stands right now in the ordinance?
What application fee that I had, I'm not clear on your question, sorry.
The sample application fee that you used in the email?
I didn't provide you with one.
They come from.
That application was provided to you by somebody else with my name on it, I did not create that application, nor did I authorize it.
There's no fee in there.
It's not a fee, it's just an application checklist.
Yeah, application checklist, yeah. That wasn't from you?
That was not from me, sir. I have one last.
At this point, I think we're all in agreement to go ahead and just do the six-month moratorium and have Mr. Allen there.
Sure. The only thing is, so that we don't run into this problem all over again, do you want to address the other concerns that the clerk has, or would you rather Mr. Clerk address those directly with the attorney?
We already agreed he was going to take care of all of that, I thought.
Because there was additional issues that.
Right, right, that's what Mr. Allen said, he would take care of that too.
Checklist and application.
Yeah, he was going to do everything so we don't end up like this again.
Is that what you agreed to, Mr. Clark, is to go through the rest of my stuff? Can I, can I ask or say one more thing, Madam Chair?
Sure.
And this is probably, I believe that we have to, will the resolution be written in such a manner that our existing businesses will not be affected by that January 31st state mandate if the council does not come to an agreement before then and they have ample time to do their renewal fee?
Certainly.
Their renewal paperwork, not fee, excuse me.
Put anything in the resolution that.
Is that what the council wishes?
Yes.
Yes.
For existing businesses, not new businesses.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, council people.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
That ends this first part of our open study sessions. The next one is for the FEMA mitigation grant.
I think you wanted to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, let's open it to public comment before we move in. Did you still have something you wanted to say? Come to the microphone, state your name, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Steve George, I'm a local attorney, I represent some local hookah lounges, and there, I'm just a little confused because I'm going to have to consult with my clients on this. It appears that there's possibly going to be a moratorium, does that mean that the moratorium would put a freeze on applying the ordinance to the existing businesses?
That's correct, right, Mr. Clark? Yeah, that's what it's meant to do.
So my understanding is, because I work on these applications at the state level, the city has to provide the state with a copy of the actual license that's going to be issued to these businesses. That copy is then incorporated into the renewal at the state level. Those applications are being prepared, they have to be submitted by January 31st. 180 days on this ordinance actually runs to January 6th, not January 31st, so January 6th is 180 days. So if there's going to be some tolling of this ordinance, we have to be concerned about the license that's going to be issued, when it can get to the state, and then having the state incorporate it into its application. If there's a shortening of that period of time, it's going to be problematic with the state, because they're going to want to see that the license has already been established by the city, and then it's going to have, they're going to have to provide a copy of that license to the state. So I guess, I just would like us to keep in mind that there's that component of it too, that there's that state license that, or actually, the license that's going to be incorporated into the application process with the state that we have to provide, or the city has to provide to the state. And that's what Mr. Kressman is going to want to see.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
May I just address that?
Okay.
If we put a 180-day moratorium, that's six months, that's April.
Yes.
Yes.
So that's. But what he's saying is, asking. But Mr. Kressman knows about this, so he, we have to notify, as a group, we have to